Okay, at this time I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order. Would you please call roll?
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Fahn? Chair Beard?
Here. First item is oral communications related to the housing authority. Any oral communication? Seeing none, no cards. Item number two, consent items. Be the status report in the minutes. Discussion, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
We'll receive six yes votes.
Pardon. Any matters from the commission? Seeing none, we're adjourned.
At this time, we'll open the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Ms. Baylor, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Fahn? Mayor Protem Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Broadwater?
Here. At this time, we'll have the flag salute by Dina, Councilwoman Dina Nguyen, and we will have invocation prior to the flag salute by Kingsley.
All right. Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you bless all who are assembled here this evening and the work we seek to do. Help us to walk in harmony as we seek to make the best decisions for our community. We also pray for and remember with compassion those who have died serving our country. Strengthen and nurture us to love and serve one another as selflessly as those brave men and women have done for us, so that in the end, we will come to live in a world of peace for all humankind. Purify our intentions, strengthen our purpose, and Lord, grant that in serving our community, we may serve you. Amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag and stay attached with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we did have a closed session, and we have nothing to report on that. I understand we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. O'Kuriki to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community spotlight on Gaviota Hernandez, or Campo, for her volunteerism and commitment to making a difference in her community. The Disneyland Resort awarded ten Orange County high school seniors with a scholarship of $7,500. Gaviota, a Garden Grove resident and student at Santiago High School, was one of the ten seniors who received this scholarship. According to the Disneyland Resort, scholarships are awarded to students with great potential and exemplary community service. Scholarships are meant to assist students in pursuing higher education by contributing to unmet expenses such as tuition, room, board, lab fees, and books. To receive this scholarship, students had to be graduating from high school, reside and attend school in Orange County, maintain a minimum of 3.0 GPA, volunteer a minimum of 150 hours with a charitable nonprofit during their high school years, and be pursuing higher education. Gaviota donated 462 hours of her time to volunteer efforts specifically with the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. She was elected to United Keystone, a leadership program that focuses on doing volunteer activities year-round in the community. In the fall, Gaviota will be attending the University of California at Riverside and will major in biology. Also here with us today is Stephanie Tomuta from Disneyland Resort and our principal, Dr. Lila Jenkins, and school counselor Maricela Romero from Santiago High School to congratulate Gaviota for her hard work. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present Gaviota with a gift in appreciation and recognition of her volunteerism and community services. Congratulations.
Congratulations, General Leader, for the tour. And ladies.
Wait. Hold on.
Oh. We also... Thank you, Chair. Gaviota, would you like to say a few words?
No, I believe first before that, the representative from Disneyland Resort would like to say a few words.
Certainly. Good evening, Honorable Garden Grove City Council. My name is Megan Navarette, and I am an ambassador for the Disneyland Resort, and very excited to be here to congratulate Gaviota on this wonderful accomplishment. You sort of did share a lot about what the resort scholarship program is all about. I did want to share a few more details on Gaviota's work with Boys and Girls Club. I know you said she was elected to United Keystone, but she did also raise money to make kits containing life necessities to distribute at local homeless shelters. I've had a chance to spend a few different events with her aside from surprising her at her school with her counselor, Maricela, and Dr. Jenkins. She's a stand-up citizen, and we're very, very excited, and she's well-deserving of this scholarship opportunity. So, Gaviota, thank you very much again for all your service to the community of Garden Grove, and congratulations.
Thank you very, very much for this recognition, and I want to say thank you for all the people that came to support me, which is my principal, my counselor, my friends, and Megan, and everyone else. So, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time. You young ladies are free to go unless you want to hear them in this evening here. Okay, at this time, we'll have oral communications for the Garden Grove City Council and for the Successor Agency and for the sanitation department, district. Let's start off with Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. Well, I hope everyone had a very enjoyable weekend. Particularly, I hope they had an opportunity to visit our strawberry festival here in Garden Grove. But I also hope that they took some time to remember those we have lost defending our country. And also, to also recognize those who have not departed, who are living veterans, such as our mayor. It's important for us to understand and appreciate what we have here and the sacrifices made by many so that we can enjoy a better life. We had the pleasure of welcoming two of our council members to a potluck that our American Legion Post has right after the memorial service at Westminster Park. Councilmember Chris Beard and Councilmember Chris Fahn were guests at our event, and we were very happy to see them there. Hopefully, we'll see them come back again. I'm amazed sometimes at how much money is spent on various things by the city, and I wonder sometimes if these expenditures are well-reasoned. Now, one of the things that we're doing is we are borrowing $45 million to support a water park in Garden Grove. Now, this money is going to have to be paid back, and hopefully, it'll come from the revenue of this park. But the citizens of Garden Grove are on the hook for it if it doesn't pan out the way they expected. Speaking of the money, I'm reminded of a character, Donald Duck's Uncle Scrooge, who used to enjoy going to his vault and diving into his piles of money. Well, hopefully, we'll have piles of money to spend in Garden Grove, but that's yet to be seen. Right now, in Garden Grove and on Harbor Boulevard, at the north end, we have Mickey Mouse. Down at the south end of Harbor Boulevard, we have the Big Bad Wolf. And not too far away is Snoopy. I hope that in the future, we are not being regarded by the rest of Orange County as Toon Town. Thank you.
Peter Katz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and citizens. As a member of the Board for the Vietnam War Museum here in Garden Grove, I want to speak about another topic since this was Memorial Day. The Orange County Veterans Memorial Park Committee Bill, Assembly Bill 1453, to bring a veteran cemetery to the Great Park in Irvine, has cleared both the Veterans Affairs Committee and the Appropriations Committee and is now headed for the floor of the State Assembly. I attended the Irvine ceremonies on Memorial Day at Bill Barber Park in Irvine, and Council Member Lawloway addressed the crowd and received a very enthusiastic support when he addressed and supported the committee in their efforts to bring a veteran cemetery to the Great Park, the former Marine Corps airbase where a lot of soldiers departed for Vietnam. On Saturday, I marched in the strawberry festival parade along with Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez, who sits on the Armed Services Committee, and we had a long talk about the shoddy treatment of veterans through the VA system. And Congress is planning to open hearings and launching a full investigation on how veterans are treated at the VA hospital, and this is an ongoing problem since World War I that needs to be addressed by both parties because both parties are responsible for the problems of soldiers dying and not getting the treatment that they need at these hospitals. It is a shame that soldiers fighting in wars to preserve our freedom come back and get treated in this fashion. Next week is the 70th anniversary of the Normandy invasion at Omaha Beach. My dad was part of that invasion, and many soldiers left their lives on the battlefields of Normandy off the coast of France. So, how soon we forget. It's also the 60th anniversary of the end of the Korean War. The Korean War contained one of the bloodiest and most decorated battles in the history of the American Armed Forces, the Battle for the Chosun Reservoir, in temperatures of 25 degrees below zero with losses of 80 to 90 percent. But in the process, 98,000 South Koreans that would have been slaughtered by the Chinese were put aboard the USS Iowa, one battleship, and were saved. Today, over 1 million people owe their lives to the rescue of those 98,000 people, and it was all due to American soldiers who did not leave them behind. So, let's not forget our veterans. And please, on June 3rd election day, there is a ballot measure, ballot measure 41, that frees up money from a Vietnam bond issue that will allow for housing for homeless veterans. So, I urge people to support that measure that's on the ballot, and let's have a little respect for the soldiers that are still fighting in Afghanistan. Hopefully, that war will come to an end. The city of Irvine lost nine soldiers in Afghanistan and Iraq and one in Indonesia just within the last two years. So, freedom is never free. When you see a soldier, thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have no more cards for oral communications. I have a number for number 7A, but none for the oral communications. Now's your last chance. Hearing none, we will close oral communications, and we will go to written communications, 5A.
Mayor, your written communication is a presentation of an economic development strategic plan. In light of the elimination of redevelopment, the city staff has put together a strategy to continue our economic development elements here in Garden Grove, and Jim Delalong is here to give a presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. As we're getting this up on the screen for you. There we go. We're ready to go. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, I would like to present to you Garden Grove's Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Mr. Delong, hold on just a minute.
No problem.
They must have turned them off. Technology.
Can you get it? Are we ready? Okay. As Mr. Fertal mentioned, the impetus for this plan was the dissolution of redevelopment in 2012. Once the dissolution process settled down, it was clear that we had to address Garden Grove's economic development program in the wake of the elimination of redevelopment. Economic development is a major piece of the circle of life for cities, especially Garden Grove. Previously, with redevelopment as a tool, we had what amounted to a huge engine that had the ability to generate huge bang for the buck. With redevelopment now gone, we have to look differently at economic development. We now have a much smaller engine, which, if used properly, can still generate good results. So, in order to put together a strategic plan for the city's economic development program, staff felt it was important that we develop an appropriate mission statement. After much thought and discussion, Garden Grove's economic development mission can be broken down to this simple and straightforward statement. The mission of the city of Garden Grove's economic development program is to strengthen and grow the city's economic base. Now, based on that mission, staff came up with several economic development goals. We have increased the city's tax base, increase other revenue sources, create and retain jobs within the city, address sales tax leakage, diversify the sales tax base, create new markets, and build local and regional partnerships. To accomplish those goals, this plan focuses on five key components: outreach, education, funding, promotion, and evaluation, and I'll go into a little bit of each of those right now. First, with outreach, this was where we could talk about partnerships with our chambers of commerce, whether they're the local chamber of commerce or our ethnic chambers of commerce. We also want to do proactive business outreach. In the past, we've done business visitations with the mayor or the council. We want to bring that up again. We've had mayor's business breakfasts, business recognition programs, business beautification awards. We want to implement a concierge program for businesses coming into the city, and we want economic development to have a little bit more of a first-floor presence where the businesses actually come into the city. We also want to create what would be called the Garden Grove Business Center within City Hall where we can meet with businesses and have a ready resource center for them. Education, in this, we're talking about internal education where all the developments within the city know what economic development is. We want external education as well, where we let the community know about what economic development is and how important it is to the community. Staff education is your economic development staff and making sure that our staff is well-versed in what all the latest trends and technology and things are that will help us do our job better. We're looking at maybe developing a broker network so that we could learn about what businesses are leaving the city or thinking about leaving, how we can fill those spots, and maybe how we can even save those businesses from leaving the city. Then, we want to set up a good relationship with our ROP, Adult Ed, and One Stop Centers in the region so that we can provide good labor to the businesses here in the city. Then, there's funding, and this, you know, everything costs a little bit of money, and this is just one of them, and where potential funding sources are annual budget allocations. We also have the money left over from our redevelopment program, and we pay off all our bills as a potential funding source. Any new revenue that this economic development program could generate could be a source of revenue for funding economic development, and then there are some tax-sharing agreements that are, that new laws have made available to cities in our position. There's also promotion, and this goes similar to education. Internal and external promotion are important. We can provide economic development knowledge to the community and to the city employees through events and programs. We want to publicize our successes, make people know what we've done. We want to have a presence at conferences and trade shows. We want to look at revamping our economic development webpage. If this is where people are going for a lot of their information, we need to have it easily read and easily navigated. Looking at potential business-to-business directory where businesses can work with other businesses to generate sales tax because they're selling to each other within the community. And in the long run, maybe we'd put together an electronic Garden Grove business newsletter that businesses can publicize the good things that they're doing and make that available to the community. And then, there's evaluation, and this is how we can tell how well we're doing. Peer review is one way of doing that. As part of this economic development strategic plan, I had some people from outside the city review it that had expertise in economic development and got favorable comments. Basic observations of the events or the activities that we do, if they're performing well. We would use surveys, questionnaires, and feedback, and we also have developed an economic development project assessment form which would help us determine if what we did was successful, if we created the jobs that we wanted to create, or if we generated sales tax revenue or something like that. And that brings, that ends our five main components. And then, we, this is really a three-year plan. That starts off as a three-year plan, so in year one, the major programs that we're going to try and work on are the partnerships, the concierge program, cross-training and counterpresence, which I mentioned earlier. You can see some of these are holdovers from our previous economic development program, but the three that I want to really talk about are like the concierge program, the cross-training and counterpresence. These are things that are new programs that we want to implement and really bring a presence of economic development and helping businesses through our permitting process and working with other community agencies as well. In year two, these are some of the things that we want to try to implement. Now, this doesn't mean that we're not, we're going to stop doing the things that we said we were going to do in year one. We want to add these things to them, and hopefully, we've streamlined our processes and gotten some things out of the way, and we'll be able to make room for some new items such as more business outreach events, look at other funding opportunities, and more community event participation. And finally, in year three, we would start pushing more external education. We'd begin looking at the broker network, and we'd start developing relationships with training organizations such as ROP and so forth. Now, even though this is the end of the presentation, it really isn't the end of the strategic plan, it's just the beginning. As we move forward, we'll be learning, evaluating programs, adding or removing programs as appropriate, and as the end of this plan nears, we'll begin preparing the next three-year economic development strategic plan. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
What exactly is sales tax leakage?
Sales tax leakage is when there are businesses outside of your city that citizens within your city are going to spend their money on so that the money that they could spend in the city is being spent outside of the city and another city is getting that sales tax.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Delong.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recess the city council meeting, and we will go to the conducts Successor Agency business and then sanitary district business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll call the May 27th meeting of the Garden Grove Successor Agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Here.
Member Fawn? Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. Uh, we already did oral communications in conjunction with city council and sand district. Um, we'll move on to consent items, and it's basically just the minutes from November, wait. Oh, several meetings. Receiving and filing minutes from previous months.
Move to approve?
Second.
Call the vote?
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, item 3A, public hearings. Do we have a, uh, presentation from staff?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Greg Blodgett to make the presentation regarding the sale of, uh, remnant redevelopment parcels as part of the, uh, long-range property management plan and the dissolution of redevelopment. So, Mr. Blodgett?
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Chair, members of the agency. Tonight, we have your consideration in a purchase-and-sale agreement between the Hennessy Group and the agency for sale of three parcels located at 13502, 13501, and O2 Barnett Way. Saley in terms of this purchase include purchase price of $515,000, which break down into 13501 Barnett, $150,000, 13502, $205,000, and 13502 Lanning, $160,000, for a total of $515,000. Uh, the agency had its, uh, appraiser, Scott Lydgard and Associates, estimate the fair market value of the site. Uh, this is consistent with the purchase price. Uh, other terms include escrow closing within 10 days following fulfillment of conditions of, uh, closing, with an outside date of 365 days. If the buyer defaults, there's a liquidated damages provision of $20,000. Uh, the monies coming from the sale go into the RTTP trust fund, as required by the dissolution act and dissolution law. At this time, staff recommends successor agency hold a public hearing, approve the attached purchase and sale agreement, authorize director to transmit the resolution agreement to the oversight board for approval, authorize secretary to accept the grant deed on behalf of the successor agency, and upon approval by the oversight board and California Department of Finance, authorize director to execute the purchase and sale agreement, assignment, and other related documents on behalf of the successor agency, and also to make minor modifications as necessary. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I am noticing the square footage of these lots, and I'm not comfortable with what is being reported as the actual square footage. Um, I think it would be, uh, I recommend we hold this item over till we can verify the square footage of these lots. Um, I, I just am uncertain that the square footages are, are the correct ones. And I think if they, I, I, they may have been the square footages, these are left remnants left over from the street widening of Trask, and I'm, I'm just suspecting that these were the gross square footages prior to the street widening. And if so, it could affect, uh, the purchase price. And I wouldn't want, one, the agency to approve the purchase price based on square footages that, I'm, I'm not certain that these are correct.
Okay. So, you actually wanted to lay it as a provision for?
Yeah, we'll bring it back at the next meeting once we can verify the, the square footages, because I think that would affect the, the total dollars based on the square footage.
So, if I'm going to do public hearing, because I think there's timing, how many days? 21 days? So, okay, the next. Carry it over to the next one, continue it to the next one, date certain.
Yeah, we can open the public hearing, and that way, we can just continue the item. Is that correct?
I take anybody that was here tonight, and then, um, so you can reopen it next time. Okay.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item that's here tonight? Okay, seeing none, so we're going to, um, move to continue it to a date certain?
June, June 10th.
June 10th. Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Call the vote?
Motion received for yes vote.
Okay, any matters from agency members? Uh, seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council.
I think we're going to go to the six, uh, sanitary district first.
Okay, at this time, I'll call the Garden Grove Sanitation District Meeting of May 27th, 2014 to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member when?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fawn?
Yeah, we've had oral communications, consent items. Anyone care to pull anything or entertain a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Motion received for yes votes.
No items for consideration. Matters for the board members? Seeing none, adjourn.
Okay, at this time, we'll reopen the city, uh, Garden Grove City Council meeting and go to consent items, number six.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that item 6A through 6K be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Anybody want to pull something?
I'd like to pull 6H.
6H?
H.
Somebody want to move the balance?
Move the balance?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
6H?
Um, Mr. Manager, I just want some clarification for the public on 6H. Uh, we are contracting with the city of Huntington Beach for police services. And, um, does it mean that when our police officers goes over to, to Huntington Beach, oh, I'm sorry, chief, um, when a police officer go over to Huntington Beach, then we would be reimbursed for the, the usage, our staff time, and also for the vehicles?
Precisely. Uh, it's, it's a request, uh, made to the Garden Grove Police Department by the Huntington Beach Police Department, because they do have planned, uh, large crowd events, and in anticipation of those events continuing, and the fact that some of the events have erupted into public unrest, where they've had to declare a, a mutual aid emergency requiring other law enforcement agencies to respond. They're just trying to get ahead of it, and so they're contracting with, uh, the Garden Grove Police Department, or requesting to, and several other Orange County agencies, so that they can schedule in advance, uh, a predetermined number of officers that would be assigned to the event, and the city of Huntington Beach would reimburse wholly the Garden Grove Police Department for all, any and all expenses.
Okay. And, um, do you foresee us using the Huntington Beach, is the agreement including Huntington Beach being used by Garden Grove?
No, it is not. It's for Garden Grove to go to Huntington Beach.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
When we use their helicopter, does they charge us for that?
Occasionally, yes.
Occasionally. Well, that's better than every time, huh?
Yes, it is.
I move to approve 6H?
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Let's go to 7A.
Mayor, 7A is a public hearing to consider amending the PUD, uh, involving the next-level sports facility, and this is for a 59-foot-tall electronic reader board. And Chris Chung is here to give the staff reporting on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The subject site is an existing 6.88 acre planned unit development located on the southwest, northwest corner of Knott Street and Acacia Avenue. Currently, the site is improved with an existing building that is approximately 120,800 square feet in area, and is occupied by an indoor sports facility, next-level sports complex. On April 3rd, 2014, the planning commission held a public hearing to consider the requested planned unit development, PUD amendment, and conditional use permit. During the public hearing, several persons came forward and spoke against the proposed entitlement requests. Concerns that were raised included light and glare issues to nearby residences, as well as to the office building located to the southeast of the subject property, objection to the California Environmental Quality Act determination, vision distraction to motorists, traffic issues, and parking issues. The proposed conditional use permit conditions of approval presented to the planning commission include the following requirements set forth in condition number eight, that the sign's illumination be dim to the level of the ambient night light level within the area at dusk, and not cause light and glare on adjacent residential properties, streets, and freeway rights of way, and that the reader board maintain a single static image between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, in order to reduce light and annoyance impacts to the adjacent residential neighborhoods. Ultimately, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the PUD amendment to the city council, and to approve the conditional use permit contingent upon the future adoption and effectiveness of the, of an ordinance approving the proposed PUD amendment. The proposed amendment to the PUD and the conditional use permit will allow for the retrofit of an existing legal 50-foot-tall Radio Shack pole sign with the installation of a new freeway-oriented electronic reader board sign in its place that is 59 feet tall and will display on-premise advertisements. The ordinance shall read as follows. In honor of the city council, the city of Garden Grove approving planned unit development number PUD dash 104 dash 70 revised 2014, a text amendment to the standards of development for signage of a planned unit development number PUD dash 104 dash 70 to allow a 59-foot-tall freeway-oriented electronic reader board sign, subject to the, to conditional use permit approval. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council conduct, conduct a public hearing, determine that the ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Article 19, Section 15311, accessory structures of the California Environmental Quality Act, and pursuant to Article 5, Section 15061, review for exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act. Introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD dash 104 dash 70 revised 2014 to amend the PUD dash 104 dash 70 zone to allow a 59-foot-tall freeway-oriented electronic reader board sign, subject to conditional use permit approval. And that concludes staff's report. If you have any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Ted Howard?
Can you give it?
I didn't hear you.
Turn in a card to speaker if I needed to.
If you needed to.
I'm here representing the sports, next-level sports complex in regards to the construction of the sign.
Anybody else need to speak when they need to be? That's a new one on me, 14 years, I don't think I've heard that. Andy, Andy Cohen? Is Andy Cohen here?
He's here to speak on the sign as well. He's the lighting expert.
You got very tough handwriting to read, Andy.
Um, so.
Call on him if needed.
Any more if needed?
Paul out?
Paul out?
Out.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ron Stuber. I am, I'm owner of an office building on Trask Avenue. I've been the owner for 24 years. I've been in the loan business, uh, in the state of California for 38 years. The size of my building is approximately 12,000 square feet. I have 14 to 16 office suites that I rate to people in business in the Garden Grove City. Uh, I am in favor of this new business getting a sign where they can bring other businesses into the state, into Garden Grove. Uh, I do have some problems in regards to the used cars or the car agencies that are on Trask Avenue. I feel that they're giving special consideration in regards to the number of signs they have on their premises. I am concerned with the large balloons or animals, gorillas, dogs, and whatever that they put on the top of their building, uh, which I don't think is necessary for the city of Garden Grove. The number of pendants that they put up, the signs, parking of automobiles on their rooftops, uh, parking on dirt areas and in the grass, uh, balloons that are in the sky at least 300 to 400 square feet. This particular type of operation that wants to come to Garden Grove is for athletics, it's for people that aren't out drinking, they're there to improve their bodies and participate in athletic endeavors. This is the type of business that we want in Garden Grove. They're not alcoholics, they're not here to go to the stripper bars, they're here to take care of their bodies. Anything we could help these people to improve their business, which is going to improve our business, I'm, I'm for it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Robin Olson. I live directly behind the building we're talking about. Um, I've lived in the neighborhood for 32 years. Um, I was a single man when I moved in. Uh, my wife now lives there with me, and when she moved in in the early 90s, she said I want to make a few changes. Well, that goes. I've got tens and tens of thousands of dollars in my backyard, put a pool in, waterfall, uh, jacuzzi, uh, barbecue, concrete, patio cover. I've improved my house, I've done the front yard, I've done everything in that house. My wife goes, "What do you mean? Let's go outside, have a glass of wine." We go out and sit down. What do we hear? Sneakers and wood, whistles blowing. So, that's what we hear. I said, "This is, this is unfair to us." We've, I've been there for 32 years. Now, this place is so busy, they have no place to park. Now, I'm going to put a sign up, and I have to worry about the light coming in my backyard? This is unfair to me. It's unfair to everybody that lives in the area. I believe that this should be not allowed, and this reading your plaque there is saying that responsible leadership and services, this should not be allowed. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Um, sorry, I'm nervous. This is the first meeting I've ever gone to, and I've been in business in Garden Grove for 27 years. Never had an issue to come here to, um...
Nobody's ever died at that podium.
Um, I, I have a State Farm agency office in, uh, West Garden Grove on Hoover and Garden Grove Boulevard. I've been in business since 1986. Um, I'm in favor of the next-level sports complex. That was a empty site there until they got in there, and basically, you know, I, I heard a new term today that sells tax leakage. Um, let's have a leak into Garden Grove. It, I've had kids and club sports all my life. Um, we travel Palmdale, Lancaster, all these ungodly places. But, let's, let's bring it to Garden Grove. Let's have people outside of Garden Grove spend their hard-earned money on gas, food in the Garden Grove area, which is going to bring, uh, revenue and tax revenue to the city. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody here from Palmdale or? Mike Boginski, have I got that right?
Yes.
Hi, again, my name is Mike Boginski, and, uh, I am the owner of the office building. If you look at the photograph there, in the lower right-hand corner that has a white roof, uh, I've owned that building for 24 years. I, of course, have been, contributed to Garden Grove for 24 years and maintained a great property. Uh, I agree with the two that spoke, that, uh, yes, we should have businesses in Garden Grove. Uh, the sports complex is excellent, but we do have some problems with it. Uh, and it's going to affect me, uh, economically greatly. Uh, because of that, I just want to give you a little bit about my background. Uh, I have a degree in construction management from Purdue University. Uh, I've built and managed office buildings for over 30 years. I originally used to work for Don Cole here, uh, in Orange County. And I've also was licensed real estate broker for over 20 years. Uh, so, what I'm going to speak about, you know, I have a lot of experience in. Uh, again, I've owned that building for approximately 24 years, about approximately 30,000 square feet. It's a multi-tenant office building, uh, and I believe, I think 15 of my tenants have written letters against this property. Uh, if you look at that photograph, one of the things that you don't see is you actually don't see the freeway there, on the other side of my building. What you see is, you see is the on-ramp between the two buildings. And this sign is a freeway sign, uh, directed towards the freeway. Unfortunately, the sign, proposed sign, is approximately 150 to 250 feet away from the freeway. If it was next to the freeway, we possibly wouldn't have these problems, uh, that we do have. If it was next to the freeway, we possibly wouldn't have these problems that we do have. I'm opposed to the sign for two big economic reasons. One is the sign is of the electronic LED type, which changes every eight seconds. It can change every six seconds by law. And every time it changes, as you know, you've seen the signs on the freeway, it causes a flash. The sign is to be aimed directly at the oncoming traffic, which means it's aimed directly at my building, at my property. The applicant has actually shown diagrams at one of the community meetings showing this. It also shows that the light source from that sign is going to engulf my building. The other item that's going to affect me economically is that I have a cell tower on my property. This is possibly going to cause interference in the cell, and the cell tower may have to be altered at a great expense. The city staff report on page four specifically states that the images will change at a rate of eight seconds. Every eight seconds. The very next sentence says, "At no time will the LED display blink or flash," but as you know of anybody that's seen these signs, it is a blink and a flash every time one of those changes. This will go on throughout the day, I believe they said maybe 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM at night. And if you can imagine your office where you currently are, all of a sudden, one of these going up directly next door, and the entire time that you're there and your clients are coming in, that you constantly have this sign flashing. Again, I've been in the office business a pretty long time. I know them pretty well, as I've said, having built and managed them for over 30 years. I foresee the quality of my tenants dropping with this sign. Their tenants, they can easily just move to another location. There are several tenants that actually, where they sit at their desk, they look up directly at the current sign. The proposed sign is going to be three times the size and 10 feet taller, and as I mentioned, you know, having the flashing, blinking. One of the things is, is there a priority here? Yes, as a matter of fact, there is a priority. The office building is currently existing. The sign is a proposed sign, and it is currently not allowed. A disapproval of this sign does not harm the current business. In fact, it doesn't do anything to the business. The business is already approved, and it's up and running. Sure, they have parking problems and that sort of thing, but it's there. This sign, an approval of this sign, does harm my building economically, and it gives an economic windfall to the sports complex. Again, a disapproval does not harm that business at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure what these gentlemen... I'm not sure what these gentlemen want when they say they speak if needed. I mean, the needed guys are the ones that have to figure that out, not me.
Mayor, we have a presentation to discuss some changes that we've done to the sign. If you wanted to speak with an expert on lighting or signage, they were brought for that purposes.
You want to hear them?
Yes.
Yeah, let's hear them, certainly.
Hey, I'm... Sure.
I'm Richard McClemmy. Thank you for having us. Mr. Mayor.
Richard, I want you to fill out a pink card before you leave.
Before you leave.
Before I leave, sure. Be happy to. And I am a contractor at the next level sports. I'm responsible for the sponsorships and corporate relations. We have been looking at this sign for a few months and possible years. There was a neighborhood meeting recently where we invited the neighborhood and the neighbors to come in and look at what we were proposing, and to listen to what their concerns might be. Many of them were unfounded and just not based in what's true about LED signs, and in particular, what we are trying to accomplish here at this facility. So we brought some experts to help us explain what we've done to modify our original request, and then also how that affects and impacts the neighborhood and the businesses. So first, the piece of paper with the sign, that was the initial, original sign that was proposed. It is exactly identical to that which the Hyundai Garden Grove facility has a few miles or such down the street. Sitting with the neighbors, it was suggested, and we took note, that if we angled the LED boards to the facing oncoming traffic, and therefore not necessarily directly pointing at their neighborhood, that would be a big help, and they would appreciate that. So we got with the sign company, and we submitted to the city a new proposal showing that the LED displays would be angled so that they would literally face directly to the freeway and not into the neighborhood. That's number one. And you can see that here on this display. Can you see it okay? You want me to pass it around? And you can see it fine?
Fine, it's fine.
Okay, good. So the next one, nope, is the exact angle of the direction that these boards will be pointing. And you can see that in the neighborhood, not only are they directed straight at the freeway, before they would have been more on a horizontal plane. Now they're being on an angle. And you can see it misses the residential neighborhood altogether. So the reason for this is not only, is twofold. Not only is it angled, but also the LEDs themselves. We found a company that can make louvers, they're called baffles. My sincere apologies. Of course that happened. My wife. Of course it was my wife. So the firm, Leontronics, and these two gentlemen, Paul Lau and Andy Chen, actually came down for this meeting this evening from Fremont, just to attend and explain a little bit about how the baffles work, and actually brought... Do you have your show and tell? So you probably cannot see this from here because it's too dark, but I couldn't reverse it. So there's a baffle, and this... She's persistent. Can you just... My sincere apologies. My wife is persistent. So I don't know if you can see, and you like to pass that along. The baffle is the extension, it's kind of an eyelid, eyelash, lip, whatever, above the light itself. And so what it does is it would block any actual light from going in a particular direction.
How many LEDs do you have in the big sign?
How many of those panels?
How many lights do you have in it?
How many lights? There's a lot.
Millions?
Do you see how small they are?
Yeah.
Millions, it's still a big dump.
It's a lot.
If you take a look at this diagram right here, we would add, each next to the LED would add one baffle next to it, so that we can control the viewing angles on the LEDs.
And therefore block from the side, in particular, anyone from being able to see it from their neighborhood.
Just to clarify that, it's just a sample piece of hardware, it's not the finished product.
So now, continuing on, nope, this one. So here, we put together three photos, where these photos were taken by Travis Dubois, who is a Garden Grove resident. His mother is actually here attending, and they live in the neighborhood. So at 3:00 PM, 6:00 PM, and 9:00 PM, you can see how these signs, this is the Garden Grove sign, and this is how this shows up, actually. Now, one of the things that was not discussed at the earlier meetings was that there's a photo sensor inside these signs, it's built in, that as the sun diminishes, the board, the light and the nit levels also diminish. They're controlled. So during the peak period of the day, they're at their highest nit level because they actually fight against the sun, so they need to be bright. But as the light goes down, the nit levels, and therefore, and it's all electronic and controlled in a computer, go down. The other thing that's important to note here, this is at 150 feet from the sign, and you can see on the other, the residents are more than 500 feet. The backyard of the first resident is more than 500 feet away. This is a photo from 150 feet. What's particular to note here is you can see that the sign does not project light. It is not built to project light. It's just built to demonstrate, or to show an image. So you can see this in particular here in the night vision, where this sign here, for example, this parking lot sign, is projecting light. It's projecting light out and down. In this sign, you can see there's no light being projected, because the back of that show-and-tell piece, it's all black. In a light that's projecting light, pushing light out to a location, it has foil and it's built to do that. This is not built to project light. So there's a lot of, you know, clarification needed, not only with regard specifically to light, but also with regards to how these things operate. So they don't blink and flash. They literally go down and back up very quickly, and your eye almost doesn't catch it. Now, you know that there's a new image there, but there's no blinking, and there's no flashing. Now, there was a gentleman who spoke about his building. You should note that this sign, we have elevated the sign, and we're going to great costs to put these baffles on and to elevate the sign above his building, so that his tenants will not be able to see the sign. The sign will be far up and above. They even have walkways in this facility so that you can't actually see up and see the sign. So it's not exactly as it was portrayed. But we wanted to take great lengths to show you that we sat with the neighbors, we heard their concerns, they actually proposed that we angle the signs and find a way to block the light. And I think when you look at the show-and-tell piece, if you actually turn it sideways a little bit, you cannot see the light. And if you can't see those lights, then you will not be able to see the light being depicted in image on the board. That's our presentation.
That's your whole presentation?
That's it.
What about these other three guys?
Well, they're just looking good. No, Andy is a light expert, and he works for Leontronics, and was here to just speak a little bit about how the light works, and how the boards change nit levels up and down, and how the baffles work.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. The louvers, are they maneuverable, or are they adjustable, or are they fixed?
They're fixed.
Okay.
But they can be placed either on the left, the top, the bottom, or the side. But once you fix them, when you manufacture them, they're fixed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Please take your sign down. Is anybody else that has not had a chance to speak, pro or con, that'd like to speak? Hearing then, we are going to close the oral communication of this issue, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Jones what his position is on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been following this one closely for a number of months. I think it's actually been probably closer to years, not months. All to say, for starters, I'm a huge fan of this business. Ever since they first came into town, I've seen some wonderful things that they've done. I think they just add a tremendous amenity to this town that we didn't have before they came, and a certain kind of Hollywood character that we didn't have in town before this. So I'm a huge fan of the business. My kids have been there, we've been there. If you haven't been inside, you got to go check it out, your jaw will drop. I mean, it's amazing. It's a Costco-sized building with professional-grade basketball courts and indoor soccer fields and that kind of stuff. So from that standpoint, my first point is just, I'd love to do whatever I can to help out businesses in Garden Grove in general, but particularly this one, and I've seen how they give back. They're a very charitable group, they're constantly raising money for all kinds of good causes, they're constantly offering use of their space for schools and other groups around there and that kind of stuff. So I'm a huge fan of this particular business. And second of all, it's just, you know, the world of billboard advertising is changing, so digital billboards are coming in, they're replacing fixed billboards. I'm not particularly allergic to that personally. A couple of years ago, we had a bunch of hype and hoopla over the Hyundai billboard that ended up coming in, and you can see now after the fact, nobody's made mention of it since it went in. It's a really benign sort of a use. It's not deteriorating any property values over there. It's probably helping to sell a lot more cars, and it's good for Hyundai, it's good for the city, and anyway, so I think for all the right reasons, I'm supportive of this. I've seen, these guys have been over backwards to go through and have a number of neighborhood meetings. I've attended several of them. Frankly, not a lot of people showed up. I do realize there's a few people that have driving concerns about this, but for the most part, I don't think there's much negative that comes out of this thing. I think it'll help the business, and it won't create any particularly negative impact for the area, so I'm totally supportive.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Jones. I think what's evident is, a picture tells, well, a picture shows it all. I can see uncertainty and concern of people who may be wondering what's coming up. I know the Radio Shack sign that had no immediate impact to the neighborhood, and I think we're evolving as a city with the signage. I think this is the state of the art. This is where we want to be, along freeways, and I think they've done their due diligence in presenting a good product. I'm pretty sure it probably cost a lot of money to produce that sign, but it's state of the art. I think it will be an amenity. It has the Garden Grove logo on it, the city. It's reflective of the city. I think it's a nice-looking sign, and I agree, it supports the business there at that location, and I think it'll work out well. I think the one business close by, as a third of it is shown by the display, is, will possibly be affected. That same section was probably also affected by the Radio Shack, the old sign, existing sign. But the positioning, the way it's located, I think it works out well. The Hyundai sign is a good example. I think this is an evolution of that as well. So we're learning as a city, and I think that should be the standard. So I'm supportive of this as well. I think it does support the business. It's a good location, it's a good fit, and so I'll be supportive of it.
Chris, I have a follow-up question. How many residents are within 500 feet of this sign?
I'm not sure off the top of my head exactly.
I think what the owner said, that the sign itself is 500 feet from the residences. Now, the property, of course, is adjacent, but I think the sign, very few, if any, are within 500 feet of the actual sign.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I remember going to Korea, our sister city, and from the airport to the sister city and back, there isn't a street that doesn't have a big sign like that, and we're very lucky in Garden Grove to limit those signs to close to the freeway and in very limited locations in the city. And I don't think we can avoid them at all because of the technology today and what is expected by consumers, and what they're used to seeing, especially in LA and then the surrounding cities. And I guess as a city, we are moving towards the direction of all the other cities. And I do like the sports complex, and I agree with one of the residents, that it's one of the best businesses that we could have in the city. It promotes health, and healthy people have healthy minds and safety in their thoughts. And I am supportive of it for the same reason Mr. Jones is, and I'm glad that the sport complex is there. And as a city, we're going to try to help good businesses. And I also believe that the sign is good for the city, because it will bring consumers, other consumers, to the city, and so that they see that our city has a lot to offer. I do apologize to the residents that are not... I do apologize to the residents that are not happy with the signs, but in this case, I think the need for the sign is overwhelming and I, we don't have enough people protesting the signs for us to reconsider otherwise. And I believe that the people who are supporting the sign have presented, have made a good presentation of all the things that they have done to limit the effect of the signs on the residents surrounding the complex. So I am going to support this project.
Who's the gentleman that had to put all the money in the backyard? I just like you to know that right now you have three votes going the other direction. But I just like you to know that, I'm going to join the three votes, but I'd like you to know that we are going to come out and take a look at the light, take a look at your backyard, make sure you're not being shoved around.
They don't need the signs because they already have.
We've heard that already. We've heard that already. And that's your opinion and you're certainly welcome to have an opinion. I just don't want you to get hurt by the sign and light in the backyard and all of that. So we will take a look at it when we get through with it and see if there's something that needs to be rectified, we will get it taken care of.
Can I ask the person who said that in the neighborhood, all the neighbors that came and were okay with it, do they have the names of those folks that actually attended that meeting? Do they have any documentation that of the people that voted that's, it was okay?
You can ask.
But I don't get it.
No, I'm not saying that you don't, but you can come up and talk to staff and find out if we got a list on it or not. And if we have it, you certainly have it.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to move it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes.
They're so close.
I think this should be the standard.
Do you think they'll ever have adjustable?
No.
Are you going to get up?
How many?
Put it in?
Kind of like figure out which angle?
What is this?
Oh, I have a question.
I think this should be the standard.
Do you want to have the very grown?
Yeah.
And you know, you can't change the logo.
No, it hasn't.
We have it more current.
This is great.
We have the old.
Let's have, yeah, let's.
Yeah, because if there are nobody in that area, it's like, yeah, like.
Yeah.
I figured as a public representative, that's the easiest thing to do.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But I wouldn't want to do that.
It's not the usual, it's not involved in that.
I figured as a public representative, that's the easiest thing to do.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But I wouldn't want to do that.
It's not the usual, it's not involved in that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But I wouldn't want to do that.
It's not the usual, it's not involved in that.
Yeah.
gadgets that we use, there it goes. Let's go to seven B.
Mr. Mayor, seven B is another public hearing to consider amendment to the code dealing with donation collection bins and Maria Parr is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to add Chapter 9.50, which would expressly prohibit the operation of donation collection bins located outside of a building in all zones throughout the city, as well as require the removal of all existing donation collection bins. The proposed ordinance is a response to a current proliferation of non-permitted donation collection bins in the city that is contributing to visual blight and property maintenance issues. Several of the observed property maintenance issues associated with the donation bins include dumping of donated items adjacent to the bins, scavenging of bins or of the items left on the outside of the bins, loitering by transients, graffiti, placement of the bins within setbacks, landscaped planters, and required parking spaces. Since January 2013, the city's code enforcement division has received approximately 35 complaints about trash and dumping associated with the donation collection bins. The municipal code does not expressly permit donation collection bins and therefore the use is not permitted. And staff has been consistent with informing the public that the donation bins are not permitted, but this has not prevented the operators from placing the bins throughout the city. The goal of the proposed ordinance is to preserve the visual character of the community by eliminating the negative impacts associated with the donation collection bins. The proposed ordinance will establish Chapter 9.50 prohibiting donation bins throughout the city. The proposed ordinance would make it unlawful for any person to operate a donation collection bin. The proposed ordinance would prohibit all types of outdoor donation collection bins, including both attended and unattended donation bins. The ordinance will require removal of all existing donation bins from the city within 45 days of the effective date of this ordinance. The city's code enforcement division will notify both the property owners and the bin operators and request removal of the bins within the specified timeframe. The donation bins that are not removed will subject both the operator and the property owner to administrative fines, potential criminal and civil actions, and/or nuisance abatement in accordance with existing provisions of the municipal code and the state law. The Planning Commission also included a provision in the ordinance to specifically give the city the ability to remove the donation bins from prior property if necessary. Staff believes that the proposed ordinance will promote the public health and safety and welfare by eliminating the visual blight and property maintenance impacts associated with the donation collection bins. Therefore, you are asked to introduce the attached ordinance for the first reading approving amendment number A-007-2014 as recommended by the Planning Commission that reads as follows: An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment number A-007-2014 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to add Chapter 9.50 to expressly prohibit outdoor donation collection bins throughout the city and to require the removal of all existing donation collection bins. This concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Other cities, do they have, what other cities have this ordinance? There are a few, aren't there?
Well, as far as Orange County, the City of Stanton adopted a similar ordinance in May of 2013. And as far as other cities, when I was doing research, a lot of them don't have any ban in their municipal code, but they just don't allow them. So if they do see one in their city, they actually go through their code enforcement and actually request the operators to remove the bins.
Okay.
But as far as Garden Grove, we'd probably be the second one to adopt this ordinance.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are the Bush shops facility exempt from this code, say the Salvation Army or the Goodwill? Would they be able to put a bin outside of their business? Because I know they do that.
Well, as far as, the ordinance will prohibit the semi-trailers, which Goodwill usually has in other cities. In Garden Grove, we do have a Goodwill store that doesn't, they do have an actual drop-off within the building. And we also have the Garden Grove Assistance League, which also has like a drop-off within the building. So the reason why we're also incorporating the semi-trailers is because they also have similar type of property maintenance issues. So in other jurisdictions, they actually do have dumping after hours when the semi-trailers are closed and also graffiti. So they have similar property maintenance issues.
So we're getting rid of the bins, but not the semi-trailers?
We're also prohibiting those. We don't have any in the city as of today. We don't have any of those semi-trailers donation drop-off that are usually manned by a staff member.
Is the semi-trailer prohibited in this code?
Yes, it would prohibit those semi-trailers.
Even with the man operation?
That's correct.
And we don't have, currently, we don't have anyone that's operating like that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Will there be anybody that'd like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. What is your desire, ladies and gentlemen?
I want to move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, let's go to eight. Eight.
Mr. Mayor, eight A is considering the Main Street Assessment Districts and Anna Neal is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, tonight the City Council is asked to approve the Main Street Assessment District budget for fiscal year 2015, approve the engineer's report, adopt the attached resolution declaring an intention to levy and collect an assessment for fiscal year 2015, and set a public hearing for June 10, 2014. On March 13, the Main Street Commission approved fiscal year 2015 budget for ongoing services such as landscaping and minor improvements. The proposed budget reflects no increase in assessments and remains at $19.92 per linear foot. Per the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the City Council must approve the proposed budget, direct staff to initiate assessment proceedings, and approve an engineer's report. The assessment will raise approximately $27,000 in revenue. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Move all three.
Yes.
Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Let's go to number nine.
Mr. Mayor, nine is similar action regarding the Garden Grove Lighting District, the Street Lighting District Number 991, and the Park Maintenance District. And Anna Neal is here to give a staff report on this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight the City Council is asked to adopt resolutions initiating the proceedings for the levying of assessments, adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report, and adopt the resolutions of intention setting a public hearing date for June 10, 2014, for the levying of assessments for fiscal year 2015 for the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts. In order to continue the lighting of streets and the maintenance of parks in the current service levels, it is necessary to initiate the proceedings of levying annual assessments under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. The purpose of the assessment is to pay for the operations and maintenance of the street light and park districts. An engineer's report has been prepared and is on file for the three districts detailing the costs and assessments. The proposed rates for each district are the same rates adopted by the City Council during the last fiscal year. The adoption for the street lighting and park maintenance assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in street lighting and $700,000 in park maintenance revenue. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Public hearing.
Oh, it's not a public hearing. Nice try.
Sorry.
I move approval of the recommendation.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second.
Are we voting on all the nines?
All the nines.
Nine As, all the nine As.
Okay.
They all are nine As. Oh, we got some nine Bs in there. Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Do we hear something else on nine B or?
Yeah, now you have nine B. It's a separate item.
Okay.
It's actually adoption of a resolution approving the annual report for the Garden Grove Tourism District. And Mr. Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Where'd he go?
Is that it?
More pictures.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight we have for your consideration a resolution approving the annual report for Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District Advisory Board. So the purpose of the GG TID is to provide revenue to defray cost of advertising and marketing efforts designed to increase overnight stays within the Garden Grove TID, also for construction and maintenance improvements within the Garden Grove TID, and also other services, activities, and programs that promote and encourage tourism within the Garden Grove Attached tonight is a resolution against items required by state law, and this sets a public hearing for this matter, June 10, 2014. Estimated that the GG TID will produce approximately $2.3 million in annual revenue for local tourism promotion efforts for fiscal year 2014-2015. Funds will be administered 80% by the VCB, which is Anaheim Convention Bureau, and 20% by the GG TPC, which is for Garden Grove's own benefit. So the accomplishments for this year included a new banner program, which included Grove District branding within the resort, and also a holiday banner. Funds were also used to do improvements along the Boulevard, which included changing out the color of the light poles to a nice green color. Also GG TID accomplishments include continued landscaping along the parkways in front of the hotels. Also this year, the GG TID presented a program to bring new signs to the resort district, and they're paying for 50% of the sign cost for all the hotels within the resort district. Also, they've ordered new bus shelters to go along the front of Harbor Boulevard and also on their properties, which mimic the Anaheim Resort bus shelters, and also new benches and trashcans.
Who maintains all those trailer, bus stops?
The GG TID will be maintaining all the new bus shelters. So at this time, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the attached resolution approving the GG TID Advisory Board annual report and declaring its intention to levy assessments for the fiscal year 2014-2015 and fixing June 10, 2014 as the time and place of the public hearing.
Any questions for staff? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Call for the vote.
You're still thinking about it.
Oh, I'm hitting the speaker button, no wonder you're not.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay. Let's go to number 11. Mr. Chris Baird.
No, we're still on nine C.
I lost nine C in here somewhere.
We got a couple more nines.
Oh, you're right, you're right. I apologize.
Nine C is the consideration of a purchase and sale agreement for property located on Tamer Lane next to the B2 Hotel Site, and Carlos Marquez is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. The purpose of this report is for the Garden Grove City Council to approve a purchase and sale agreement with Robert and Lori Ferguson for the acquisition of real property located at 12262 Tamer Lane Drive in the city of Garden Grove. With the hotel project adjacent to the Sheraton Hotel having the potential to move forward in the near future, the acquisition of the properties on Tamer Lane Drive adjacent to the project site will help mitigate project impacts to the residents on Tamer Lane Drive. Recently, the owners of a single-family home at 12262 Tamer Lane Drive approached staff to gauge the city's interest in purchasing their property. The subject property is located on the east side of Tamer Lane Drive and backs up to the future hotel site adjacent to the Sheraton Hotel. In addition to project mitigation efforts, staff is requesting the City Council consider the acquisition of the property in order to continue the neighborhood stabilization effort on Tamer Lane Drive. The subject property contains approximately 8,000 square feet of land and is currently approved by the 1,000 square foot single-family residence. It is located adjacent to the B2 Hotel Site. The staff has reached an agreement to acquire the subject property for $450,000, which is within a reasonable range of fair market value. The owners have requested that as part of the agreement, they be allowed to remain in the house for six months rent-free while they seek and purchase a replacement house. In an effort to prevent vandalism and generate revenue, the city may lease the subject property at market rates on a month-to-month basis upon the vacation of the property by the current owners. Funds were appropriated for economic development purposes in the 2013-14 fiscal year budget. And based on the foregoing, it is recommended that the City Council, one, approve the acquisition of real property located at 12262 Tamer Lane Drive, two, authorize the city manager to execute the purchase agreement, make minor modifications as needed on behalf of the city, three, authorize the city clerk to accept the grant deed on behalf of the city, four, authorize the finance director to draw a warrant in the amount of $450,000 and any funds necessary for escrow costs when appropriate to do so, and lastly authorize the city manager to execute a month-to-month rental agreement on a permanent basis. And that concludes the report. Staff's available to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
We have a motion.
Second.
So I have a second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Let's go to nine D.
Mr. Mayor, nine D is approval of a third amendment to the agreement with the County of Orange to provide forensic services, and Chief Kevin Rainey is here to give a staff report, or maybe Todd Elgin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Since 1996, the City of Garden Grove has contracted with the Orange County Crime Lab for the majority of our forensic processing and evidence collection. The service has always remained the same, and it consists of one senior forensic full-time person that is actually housed in our police department. She is responsible to perform physical, latent, and serological coordination of evidence. Also, she's responsible for our CAL ID coordination and department training. In addition to her, there's one lead forensic specialist and one forensic specialist that are actually housed at the County Crime Lab. They are responsible for the Garden Grove caseload between the hours of 6:00 AM and 1:30 PM, Monday through Friday. In addition to that, all supplies used by the county to collect evidence as well as photography is also included in the price. The current contract expires with the Crime Lab on June 30, 2014. The request would be actually an extension of the current contract for the years 2014-2015. The cost associated with the current contract is approximately $420,000. The future contract, 1415 contract, would be $435,000, a $15,000 increase. That represents a 3.6% increase in actual contract, and that's due to the labor costs associated with the county personnel. Forensic services is obviously vital to our police department. All evidence collection processing and photography is critical to our department's mission, and it's what makes the difference in the successful prosecution of individuals for crimes committed in the city of Garden Grove. I'm requesting that the City Council approve the amendment and agreement with the county to provide forensic services for the city and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. That is the conclusion of my presentation, and I will answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Move to approve the amendment.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Mr. Baird.
Yeah, Strawberry Festival, what a great event.
Wait, wait, Mr. Mayor, we have one last item.
What?
11A. I hate to deprive Maria Stipe of her moment to present. E-cigarettes, as requested by the council. May we have her proceed?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. During oral communications last month, concerns were raised regarding the growing use of electronic cigarettes in business establishments and the difficulty business owners are having related to enforcing against smoking electronic cigarettes in these businesses. The difficulty was attributed to there being no regulations in place prohibiting the use of electronic cigarettes. At that time, the City Council asked staff to research the topic and bring back information regarding electronic cigarettes and options for potential regulation. Before presenting the options, I want to share some background information about what electronic cigarettes are, along with an update on the status of federal, state, and local regulations. So we're going to go ahead and walk through the presentation, it should be on your screen. So what are electronic cigarettes? Electronic cigarettes are commonly referred to as e-cigarettes. They're battery-powered devices that allow the user to inhale water vapor without producing fire, smoke, ash, or carbon monoxide. They're designed to resemble traditional cigarettes and may contain nicotine, other chemicals, and flavoring, but they do not contain tobacco. So that's the primary difference. Electronic cigarettes are becoming increasingly popular. There's a huge market for electronic cigarettes. Currently, there's very little federal or state regulation. Most laws and regulations currently relate to the use of tobacco or the smoke generated from traditional tobacco-related products. E-cigarettes being different, they produce a water vapor, not smoke, and they do not contain tobacco. The overall health risks and benefits of electronic cigarettes have not been widely studied and are the topic of debate. Proponents argue the use of electronic cigarettes aids smokers in quitting since they're able to inhale nicotine through a cigarette-like device, and that the adverse health effects of smoking come from the tobacco plant, which is not present in e-cigarettes. So I guess with the electronic cigarettes, you can actually adjust the amount of nicotine that you can ingest. This claim with regard to assisting in stopping smoking has not been fully substantiated by scientific studies. There are health concerns related to electronic cigarettes. They produce a cloud of vapors containing unknown substances. The possible health effects of bystanders breathing or absorbing these vapors through their skin is unknown. However, limited analysis by the Food and Drug Administration has found that e-cigarettes do contain some carcinogens. Electronic cigarettes may be particularly appealing to young consumers due to the added color and candy-like flavoring, can get flavors like fruit punch and cherry and things like that. Federal regulation, currently, there is no federal regulation with regard to electronic cigarettes. Very recently, last month, in fact, the Food and Drug Administration announced plans to regulate electronic cigarettes in much the same way that they regulate traditional tobacco. So once new federal regulations take effect, new and existing e-cigarette products will require FDA approval and oversight, just like traditional tobacco products. However, this is a recent ruling, and the FDA's proposal will not take effect for a minimum of another year, so it could even be longer than that. State regulation, California law currently prohibits the sale or distribution of e-cigarettes to minors. So that is the only current state law that is in place that regulates the use of e-cigarettes. So it just is a prohibition against the sale to minors. State regulation, as we know, the state law does currently, or does and has for some time prohibited smoking of tobacco, but not currently e-cigarettes. So the places where tobacco are prohibited includes public buildings, enclosed places of employment, playgrounds and tot lots, licensed daycare facilities, residential dwelling units where smoking is prohibited by the landlord, public transit systems, and public entity vehicles. So that's where you cannot smoke tobacco products. There is current action in place with regard to legislation and regulation of electronic cigarettes. The most important bill is SB 648 Corbett. This bill would prohibit smoking of electronic cigarettes in most places prohibited, in most places where tobacco products are currently prohibited by state law. So if we go back and we look at this list, that's where, the same list that would include the prohibition of smoking electronic cigarettes. The status of this bill is that it's currently pending a hearing date in the Assembly Government Organization Committee. It's a two-year bill, it was introduced last year. It has not been progressing very quickly through the legislative process. So we don't have a date for when it will be heard next. AB 1500 Dickinson is another piece of legislation that would address the sale of electronic cigarettes to minors via online sales and mail delivery services. And both bills are supported by the League of California Cities. In fact, last month, the League Board of Directors made the decision to support both of these pieces of legislation, and so they have the support of the League of California Cities, and we've been tracking them. What are other Orange County cities currently doing? Most cities in Orange County are taking a wait-and-see approach. There's been relatively little regulation in Orange County. Seal Beach has taken the strongest action in terms of regulating electronic cigarettes. They currently prohibit the use of electronic cigarettes where state law bans smoking of tobacco products. In Buena Park, they've taken a more limited approach, and they have implemented an ordinance to prohibit smoking and the use of electronic cigarettes in city-owned recreational and parking areas. And in Laguna Niguel, they're going to be considering a ban in their city parks, and that ordinance will be considered their first meeting in June, and it's called the Healthy Parks Ordinance, so it's just limited to parks. Several other cities have considered the matter and are waiting for more information. So they've gone to the City Council for consideration, but the City Councils have decided to not move forward with regulation and just wait and see until more information, either with regard to the health effects or the state, the status of the state regulation progresses a little bit further. So the cities that have considered various types of bans include Irvine, Laguna Beach, San Clemente, Elisa Viejo, and actually Mission Viejo as well. So where are we? Our options are to wait and see and watch the state legislation or take an action to support the state legislation, watch and study to determine what the actual health effects ultimately turn out to be, or move forward and adopt an ordinance. And that effects ultimately turn out to be, or move forward and adopt an ordinance and that would regulate the use of electronic cigarettes, and that ordinance could take several forms. It could prohibit smoking of electronic cigarettes everywhere that smoking of tobacco is prohibited by state law, or it could prohibit the smoking of electronic cigarettes in only certain places. So, that concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have a general question about vape cafes. Any, did you study or look at any of those? Because they're emerging throughout, I think I've seen a couple open up in West Garden Grove. Do we treat those like hookah parlors or smoke shops or something like that? Vape cafes?
Yeah, apparently, our code doesn't address it one way or the other, so it looks like that's not within our code yet.
The city of Aliso Viejo considered a ban on lounges in sensitive areas, churches, schools, parks, childcare facilities, but ultimately, they did not adopt that ordinance.
Okay. Any ideas?
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of it all. Just prohibit everywhere smoking of Jack, it was prohibited by state law. I'll make that a motion. We have a second.
Bring back an ordinance or consideration that would do that?
Yes. You read my mind. We have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
I'm going to let Steve Jones go earlier first tonight, because you've tried it twice, and it hasn't worked either time.
All I'd like to say is, this last weekend, Memorial Weekend, big thanks and recognition all those who have served our country and died for our freedoms, but also in town, we had the Strawberry Festival. Big shout for Cam Mangles and everyone else who was involved in bringing back the 5K Run. That was the new addition this year that we haven't seen in however many years, 20 years. It was a huge success for a first year coming back. I think 450 participants in the run, and just a great time and kind of a natural addition to the festival since we already had the streets blocked off for the parade that morning, so.
Okay, now, Chris, you can go.
I'll echo the sentiments of Councilman Jones. I think the Jones family was out there running, weren't they? So, was Councilman Fan, and I think the mayor won. You came in first in your race, didn't you?
Yeah.
Number one as mayor, so it was an excellent event. It was fun, and I think it's just going to grow from here on out, the 5K Run I'm talking about. And just to let people know that all the proceeds go to the Sister City Association, which enables Garden Grove students to go overseas, visit our sister city of Onyang in South Korea. It's a wonderful experience for them, and in return, we have those students from South Korea coming over here, and it's just a wonderful program, and I'm so glad the proceeds are going to that. Very popular. I think it'll just grow throughout time. Excellent results for the first time, or first time in a long time. So, with that, I want to commend everyone who was involved and wish them continued success in years to come. And the Strawberry Festival in and of itself, all the activities, the gala ball starting on Thursday, cake cutting on Friday, the parade, I mean, it's just so Garden Grove, so all-American, and it's just wonderful to be a part of this city, really family-oriented, and it's a great experience. I enjoy it every, every year. But as Mr. Mitchell pointed out, the reason for the holiday is, and I was happy to see a lot of people coming out for the different ceremonies and events to commemorate and honor those. And one particular event was the Garden Grove at the cemetery, Magnolia Cemetery, and I just want to repeat a quote given by the pastor Mark at the time, and this is a quote, "Our debt to the heroic men and valiant women in the service of our country can never be repaid. They have earned our undying gratitude. America will never forget their sacrifices," end of quote. That was by President Harry S. Truman. I think that just says it all. I'm so proud to have attended the events. It's very, very much a pleasure to attend American Legion Post 555. It's a great experience, great talking to people, but I, I really enjoyed the holiday, and it really meant a lot, and thank you to all those who remember those fallen heroes that have done so much for our great country. So, just a great overall time, and I look forward to it again next year. Thank you.
Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. I was in a personal marathon trying to get a family of six here to Strawberry Parades, but I did finally make it to the marathon that we have, and I saw all the people in there and how happy they were, and I think it's a healthy event, and a lot of kudos to Cam Mango and all the people that supported him in this event. I think they've done a wonderful job. This year is my last year on the council, so I've been doing a lot of reflecting on my service on the council and all the events that we go to, and I'm, I think, I'm happy and thankful to be a part of this city, and thankful that we have such good people serving the city, and I hope that we will have more good events like this to come, and with every event, I think every moment on the council was very rewarding, personally rewarding, and worth it.
Thank you. I have to, I have to go along with the, everything that these fellow council people have spoken on tonight. I think that it was one of the better weekends of them all that I've seen, and I've seen a lot of them. I talked my grandson into working in the corn booth instead of me. That was certainly, worked out well. And one of the things that hasn't been mentioned is that we did a groundbreaking this year last, last week for the new hotel that is going to be indoor water park, and I think you're going to see one fantastic hotel, and I hope we can have tours through it and let people see what it's going to be before they really open the door for it. I think the people of Garden Grove ought to see what we did, what it's like, and what it will be, because it will be one fantastic fundraiser for this city, and it'll be really good. Everything, other than that, I just, I thought the, the weekend was fantastic, and I'm just glad to be part of it. And so, we'll be back when?
June 10.
June 10, at the same time. Thank you very much.